It's 6 o'clock, March 10, 2020. I call the City of Kennedy's City Council Regular Scheduled Meeting. A quorum is present. Amanda, will you please call roll?
Counsel Bionis?
Present.
Counsel Owen?
Here.
Counsel Science?
Here.
Counsel Connaught?
Here.
Counsel Meyer?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Leslie, would you say the prayer, please?
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the sunshine and the rain. We ask that you would watch over us, help us to make good, sound decisions for the growth of your community. Ask that you would allow us to be mindful of each other, to hear, listen, and understand what needs to be done, and that you would touch each heart as we would make the decisions necessary to move our city forward. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone sign up for citizen comments?
Joe Baker?
Joe Baker.
Good evening, council members and mayor. I see you've got a long agenda, so I'll be as brief as I can. I just want to bring up the issue of the city's website. I've noticed the last, at least two meetings, maybe more, the agendas have not been posted on the website, and they're also not being posted on the city's Facebook page, and I would like to humbly request for you all to do what you can to start doing that again. I know you all value transparency, and you know that you'd like to get people to come to these meetings to see what's happening in their city. So that's something that I would like to ask you to do, and if you're looking for a way to do it, just to remind you that you five, the council members, called shots. All it would take would be one written directive, voted on by a majority of you, give it to the city manager, directing him to instruct city staff to put the agendas and the minutes, information about water restrictions and things of that nature on the website. If you could do that, I'd really appreciate it.
Anyone else?
Salvador Vella?
Salvador Vella.
I wanted a copy of my statement, just to clarify. My name is Salvador Vella, and I really don't know, don't know what compels me to make the statement on a matter that I experienced at my home in front of my friend, David Diaz. In any event, with all due respect to all council members, to the people gathered here, this is... My public statement is in reference to a verbal message that was relayed to me at my home on Sunday evening at 1:00 on March 1st by a person present in this meeting. As stated by the individual, I am relating to you information from Mayor Sutton that your paperwork relating to your resume that has been ordered to be shredded. The council members met and decided your resume papers was to be shredded. However, Mayor Sutton realized the work that had been expended, and he decided to keep this copy. I responded to the person. The council has a right to reject any application. Again, with all due respect, council members, as your action was inclusively relayed in this manner, if the message content is true. The action makes me feel harassed, bullied, intimidated, and somewhat offended. Every candidate applicant for the posted decision truly understands that their application may be rejected, and a rejection letter may or may not be sent to the rejected applicants. But to send someone to deliver a degrading governmental verbal message from the mayor to someone at his home on a Sunday afternoon is appalling. I cannot fathom, much less understand, the reasoning behind this type of action. I do not know what to expect as a citizen. I don't know what to expect next. My resume paperwork is responding to a posted position, opening, and nothing more, nothing I am a God-fearing man, a practicing Catholic. I will take no action on this matter. If this was a weak moment on the mayor's part, I have compassion for wrongdoings. I am human, and I make mistakes too. The wrong can be forgiven. In closing, I carry, I'll carry on as a respected citizen. My only hope is that my public statement here today helps us act on business matters in a fair, ethical, and professional manner. Thank you.
Consent Agenda, item number six, Consider an Act on Consent Agenda. Is there anything you guys would like to roll?
I want code compliance, police department report, and water and wastewater.
Code compliance, police department report, what else?
And water and wastewater.
Water and wastewater. Okay, anybody else? Okay, go ahead with your presentation.
Okay, code, somebody's here from code compliance, right? Joel, I have a question about the code compliance as far as what we're doing about all the vacant, unoccupied houses that we have in our community. We had one that caught on fire right up the street from my house last week. That was, it's already been burned once. And then they tell me we had another one that caught on fire on School Street. What do we need to do so that we can have a process of getting those places removed so they're not, they're dangerous to the city?
I am in the process of getting those two removed.
Okay.
I had to make sure there was no more errors, probates to the places. So now I'm in the process of sending my legal letters out, posting my posts in the paper and on the yard for the time we have to do it.
Okay. And then for the police department, I was wanting to know on the process of finding out, and we talked a little bit, but I want the community to know, on the process of finding out what happens when this, when these, what happened when this happened, you know, and getting a fire marshal and what that process is.
Sure. Arson investigation, since we don't have a local fire marshal, arson investigation is followed by the police department, not real area of expertise, so we did call in the fire marshal, the state fire marshal. They came in, they were here yesterday, and did really in-depth look into both of them. What they'll do is they'll tell us what caused the fire, how it started, the way the fire moved, and all those kind of things, and then it's up to us to try to investigate who caused the fires.
And wastewater, is somebody here from wastewater?
I can't sound, yeah.
I just wanted to commend wastewater because we had, last month, there was 140,000 gallons of lost water, only 140,000 gallons. That is way, way down from where we started. You guys are working really diligently and really hard to get our water situation handled, and I want you to know that this councilman appreciates it because when it's not happening, we are throwing good money away, literally flushing it down the drain. But 140,000 gallons and all the leaks, the leaks we had, getting them rapidly repaired, fantastic. greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Anything else? If there's something else, I'll entertain a motion to consider.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call roll.
Counsel Bionis?
Yes.
Counsel Owen?
Yes.
Counsel Science?
Yes.
Counsel Connaught?
Yes.
Counsel Meyer?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. I'm going to move to item number 10, Consideration of Possible Action in Regard to an Agreement Between the Kennedy Regional Airport and Headquarters Air Education and Training Command Establishing Responsibilities in Support of AETC Aircraft at Kennedy Regional Airport. Any movement?
I'll make a motion we consider it to item number 10.
Second?
I'll second.
Presentation.
Yeah, Mayor, you stated it's the renewal of an agreement between the city and one of the Air Force Training Commands to use space around the Kennedy Regional Airport for in-flight training, approach training, that type of thing, and I believe with your permission, this requires here to really add that.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I'll take just a few minutes. The, as most of y'all know, the Air Force has been flying around here for years, and they've been doing that under an agreement. And over time, they feel like they need to come back to us and upgrade the agreement, make sure everybody understands what's going on. You can read the agreement, basically, we just allow them into our airspace, and they come over here, and they don't even touch down, they're not wearing out our runway, they just make low passes, they're doing emergency procedures, they're doing training. I actually asked them to come down last year, and they came down and spent a couple hours in my office, and brought me maps, and they showed me what they're doing, and basically, this is the background, there's 38 airplanes at Randolph Brooks, just like the ones that come in here. And they are training instructors, so this is not primary training. And those instructors, once they're trained, they actually go to other parts of the United States. They use lessons in airport, they use our airport, I forgot the other one they use, but they break it up into three different airports, and they come down, and some of you may hear in the mornings or late evenings or in the afternoon, you'll hear this sound like a mosquito on steroids, southwest of Kennedy, y'all ever hear that?
Yeah.
Well, that's what these guys are doing, they're practicing aerial combat and maneuvers and whatever, and use airplanes. But before they leave, they're required to make three emergency landings. They don't actually land, they're low passes, and they come over the area, and they swing around at 3,000 feet, or they do another one, they call it a low key and a high key, they go to 5,000 feet, and they chop the power. And they're supposed to circle around and land the airplane with no power. And that's something they learn in case they lose an engine. And for y'all that may not have been here when it happened about 10 years ago, that happened at Gillette, at 18,000 feet, the engine seized, one of the variums gave up, and the engine just stopped. So they turned around, and they coasted or glided from Gillette to Kennedy from 18,000 feet. They came in, and they did, followed all the procedures, and they made a landing. And I wish y'all could have seen that, it's unbelievable that they could come from that far and come in and make a safe landing. About a month ago, we had another, not another incident, where the fan motor in the back seat of the airplane, the fan that controls the evaporator coil that keeps the avionics, the radios cool, came apart. The little housing just came apart, and that fan was blowing, and it blew fragments into the eyes of the guy in the back seat. So they did not know exactly what was going on, they decided it might be a good idea to make a cautionary landing. So they did, they landed here in Kennedy. So they landed in Kennedy, and I was even out of town, and I'm proud to say that before they landed, they were able to talk to Randolph Brooks Tower. The tower called the dispatcher, the county. The county dispatcher called the chief of police here in Kennedy, called the fire department and EMS. They all responded quickly. We need to write that down as a drill, you know, about how quickly they responded and did that. And I was at another meeting, and I drove back to the airport, and I've never seen so many people out here all of a sudden, but anyway, we went down, and they were still on the runway, checking the airplane, and so we towed them off the runway, and we hanged them and took care of them while they were here. But the other thing is, I want you to know that anytime they're in the air, and we have civilians, airplanes are coming in, they give way. They let us land, they let the people that are coming in to Kennedy land first, so they're not taking priority over the airspace. But that's just a little thumbnail sketch, and I was supposed to do that in three minutes, and of course, I can't say hello in three minutes, so it's a little longer. Do y'all have any questions?
You guys have any questions? Did you sign the agreement, look over?
Yes, I signed it.
Do you guys have anything? Is it necessary, Mr. Mayor?
Is it necessary that we do this?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, I think it is. Kind of like, for those of you that have been in the military, we need to support the military, and this is one way we can do it, and these guys are doing a tremendous job, and are always very courteous. And also, you'll notice an agreement down there at the bottom, it says cancellation. This letter of agreement shall remain in effect until revoked by any of the signatories. There's no timeline other than 30 days. We can say, guys, this isn't working, this is too tragic here, you guys are mean to us, whatever's going on, but I don't think that'll be the case, but we can back out of this contract with our business.
Any movement?
I make a motion that we approve the agreement between the Kennedy Regional Airport and Headquarters Air Education and Training Command establishing the responsibilities in support of the AETC aircraft at the Kennedy Regional Airport.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call roll.
Counsel Bionis?
Yes.
Counsel Owen?
Yes.
Counsel Science?
Yes.
Counsel Connaught?
Yes.
Counsel Meyer?
Yes.
All due.
Motion passes, thank you. Mr. Mayor, we appreciate you guys, what you're doing out there.
Well, thank you, and thank y'all for your service.
Thank you, sir. Item number seven, Consideration of Possible Action in Regard to an Agreement with City of Kennedy and Karnes City Volunteer Fire Department Regarding the Karnes County Emergency Training Facility. Movement?
Make a motion, do we discuss item number seven?
I'll second that.
Presentation.
Yeah, Mayor, I believe the city attorney has, has the presentation on it. Yes, this is a draft agreement I prepared between the city and the Karnes City Volunteer Fire Department. It's not in a local agreement because Karnes City Volunteer Fire Department's not going to elect it. So this is an agreement that the city has a government to enter into. Anybody else? With regard to the city's contribution of $100,000, and the other obligations the city will have under the general interlocal agreement is the, it's pro rata share of the maintenance, and then one, three, five years, here's the inspection fee. The $100,000, I does hand that as our ease to use the facility. Honestly, I don't think they're going to charge anybody any of that, but if we use the facility more than any other fire department or police department, that's the consideration for the $100,000, which is, is a budget item, which is an entire amount of the charges. I sent this over to the Karnes County Attorney for review. She indicated that there, she saw a couple of errors, I don't know what that means, that they're material or grammatical or whatever, but she was, her accountant was busy today and yesterday, so her review won't be complete until probably tomorrow or the day after. I don't think, I think the basic agreement is sound, it's probably some of the form over substance type thing that provision she prefers to use, which I didn't have any problems with her last changes to the general overall agreement. At this time, since the agreement's not complete, I'd just like to get an action item by the council to negotiate the agreement, and if the city council wants it to come back, or give the city manager the authority to sign it after negotiation, that would be fine. If there's a material change in the agreement, which means it changes the agreement substantially, then I would recommend bringing that to the city council. But if the changes are going to be form over substance, grammatical, then I would recommend that the council, sorry, the city's attorney, to continue negotiating the agreements and authorize the city manager to sign it on this negotiated agreement.
You guys want to talk about it? Discussion?
I'm good with that, I think that makes good sense.
Okay. Anyone else? How long will these changes take, approximately, once we?
She said, she said tomorrow or next day.
But once you say that, then they can go, they can go ahead and sign that, right?
That's what, yeah.
If you, if you guys bring up an idea, I'd be interested. Is there any other discussion?
I'll make a motion that we have the city attorney finalize the negotiations with the county attorney, and then authorize the city manager to execute this agreement.
Second, I'll second that.
I have a question.
Yes.
This morning, Commissioner's Court, did we not approve that same agreement?
That's a different one. That was the agreement that we, the agreement we approved in city council last Tuesday is what we approved in Commissioner's Court.
Okay, so we approved it, she said, now there's such thing about in top there.
No, no, no. This, the agreement we approved in Commissioner's Court this morning is what this council approved last Tuesday in city council. That was the agreement between all of the entities. This is the agreement for the payment. So once this gets finalized tomorrow, hopefully, is what Adolf is trying to say, then the city manager can execute this agreement, then the city can issue that $100,000 check.
Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call roll.
Counsel Bionis?
Yes.
Counsel Owen?
Yes.
Counsel Science?
Yes.
Counsel Connaught?
Yes.
Counsel Meyer?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. Item number eight, Consideration of Possible Action in Regard to the Contribution of $100,000 Budgeted in the 2019-2020 Fiscal Year Budget to the Karnes City Volunteer Fire Department for the Karnes County Emergency Training Facility. Presentation.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Staff had this on the agenda as a follow-up to the previous item.
Okay.
Contingent on final execution of that agreement, we wanted it to be before you all that authorized this payment. And we thought that that would be the proper thing to do in this situation and circumstance, and contingent on the execution of the agreement, we would ask for it going forward with this payment.
Okay. Any movement?
I'll, movement or a motion?
Motion.
Motion. I'll make a motion that once the city manager executes this contract, then the City of Kennedy issues the $100,000 budgeted into fiscal 2020 City of Kennedy budget.
I'll second that. Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call roll.
Counsel Bionis?
Yes.
Counsel Owen?
Yes.
Counsel Science?
Yes.
Counsel Connaught?
Yes.
Counsel Meyer?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. Item number nine, Consideration of, Consider Act on Request of Vacate and Replot Lots Three, Four, Five, and a Half of Six, Block One of Calhoun Subdivision, Per map, a plot recorded in Cabinet A, Page 99 of the plot records Karnes County, Texas, to be known as Lot 3A, Block One of Calhoun Kennedy Subdivision in the City of Kennedy, Texas, also known as 810 North Fifth Street. Any movement?
Make a motion to consider item number nine on the agenda?
I'll second that.
Presentation, please.
Thank you, Mayor. As you've already noted, this is requested by the property owner of the lots that are listed in the heading to combine three and a half lots into a single lot. Address, location listed there, 810 North Fifth Street, and the request is here this evening, if you all want to hear from her, of course. The notifications, statutory notifications in this replat were sent out and posted as required. The item was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission last night. The Planning and Zoning Commission acted to approve this request for replat. The item is before you all now for ultimate approval of the potential replat.
Okay.
And again, this difference is here this evening.
Just a quick question, Martha. Is this going to include both of the houses, or just your new warehouse, the shop is, and then the vacant lot?
It's just going to be the new house, the shop, and the vacant lot.
Okay, that's all right.
Martha, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, sir, no, the other.
No? Joel? And the city has your blessing on it as well? Okay.
In my case?
I was just going to say, I'll make a motion that we approve agenda item number nine, as stated.
And I'll second.
Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call roll.
Counsel Bionis?
Yes.
Counsel Owen?
Yes.
Counsel Science?
Yes.
Counsel Connaught?
Yes.
Counsel Meyer?
Yes.
All due.
Motion passes, thank you. Item number 11, Consideration of Possible Action in Regard to Approve a Cost of Living Pay Increase for the City of Kennedy Employees.
Make a motion that we consider item number 11 on the agenda?
Second.
I'll second.
Discussion. We have a presentation on that.
Mayor, I would just say that this is continuation from y'all's meeting last week. Some of y'all have requested this to be on the agenda tonight, and it's at the, at the pleasure of the council, y'all's discussion and consideration of the assignment.
Okay, well, I have something that I want to say about this item. We had good intentions when we started out to set this in place and try to get some stuff in place before we acted on it. We thought we could get it done pretty quick. It's been six months. It's not fair for us to continue holding the employee's pay increase because we failed to execute what we set out to execute. Now, we have a new city manager who is going to be preparing a new budget, a new fiscal budget, in the next six months, that we can put in the merit and the cost of living like we, like we wished we had of before, but it's not fair for us to continue holding the employee's pay. It's creating low morale with the employees because they're not happy, they feel that they are being neglected, and, you know, like I say, we had good intentions when we started this. We thought we could get it done in a couple of months and have everything executed, and now we're saying we're going to wait longer and put the burden on the new city manager to try to get it executed. That's another two months that we're going to ask them to wait. I think we need to do this and get it done, and let him have the six months. I think we need to do this and get it done and, and let him have the six months to build his program the way he wants to build it, set it up in the budget so we can approve it and have the monies in place to do it.
Good job, sir. Jack, is there any exception for us for our council to go into executive session to discuss this?
Um, now we have, well, now, because if it's a specific employee, yes, gen, general employees, now, um, with regard to, compared to personnel exception, the city attorney, there's no intending litigation or contractual, uh, issues. It's more of a financial, and it's, that has been budgeted, uh, and the effects of the, you know, of the effects of the increase at this time for, so it's not an executive session.
I, I would like for us to consider hearing from Mr. Lynn with this matter. Is that what you guys?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I have taken the opportunity in the couple of days that I've been here and been listening to the things that have been going on around the city. And given the, uh, the consideration that we're talking about, people's livelihoods here and raises and that, my perspective on this would be very simply this. Uh, I would suggest that COLA raises are always done at the beginning of the year as a unilateral, across-the-board raise. Uh, that's something that we budget in and that we take care of when we approve a budget right off the bat. Uh, that we do merit raises as they come up with each individual upon anniversary dates and things of that nature. So those, those type of increases are solely based upon performance and they are, um, done on a rolling basis on anniversary dates and that. Uh, given the issues that I've, that I'm understanding right now in the city and that, um, I'm looking at these numbers and that, and I believe someone had said that there was a 3% budgeted, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and that the governing body was a little uncertain as to how much they wanted to maybe do for COLA and how much they wanted to allocate towards merit increases, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so my recommendation would be very simply this, and, um, I, I tread very widely when I say this. I, I would say that the council, the governing body, would consider enacting a COLA retroactive back to day one of this fiscal year. Uh, that would be my recommendation, and that we would put off meritorious increases to give time for a system to be put into place that is going to both benefit the employee as well as the city. Uh, because not only do we have responsibility to our employees to take care of them, we have a fiduciary responsibility to the residents of this town to be good stewards with their money. So we need to make sure that we kind of put these two together. And then there's a third part of this triangle, not your human resources aspect, that any meritorious increase must be based upon items that are not ambiguous, but that we can just go back and that are objective and not subjective. So we need to put something in place to where it's not just, um, employee A gets, gets a 10 cent raise and, but employee B gets a 3 cent raise and that. We've got to have a system that's going to be fair, firm, and consistent, and that's in HR, that's the first thing we look for, is fair, firm, and consistent, and we have to be that way with everybody. That being said, um, I took some liberties, uh, and I apologize to the governing body if they did not wish me to take those liberties, but I took some liberties, do some calculations on behalf of the city as to what it would cost the residents of the city of Kennedy to retroact raises. Uh, if the governing body approved, say, a 1.5% COLA, that would, uh, cost the city a lump sum of $13,056.34. That's what we would have to pay to go back to the first of the year, uh, to make up the difference in that. If we moved to the 3%, which was budgeted, which would be my recommendation, since we're going to do away with looking at a meritorious increase, I would say give the whole 3% as a COLA to the team. Uh, that unfortunately will cost the city more money. Uh, it will cost $26,427.27. Um, so, but I think if we do that, that's a, number one, that's a, that's a goodwill gesture, uh, on the fact that we would just go ahead and just implement all that, and it would kind of, what I would call middle road there. We would be coming halfway to meet these individuals. And then as we go forward in the city, we will have systems in place and budget lines in place that will accomplish both COLAs and meritorious increases as we go forward.
And the one thing that the city, that, that we need to be aware of, this is budgeted money. This is money we have already budgeted for that. We didn't pull it out of the air and say, we're going to do it now at the beginning of the October 1. We had budgeted a 3% increase all the way across the board. So we're not spending money that we didn't budget, we're spending money that we have already allocated for that.
Correct, and just to clarify, Councilman, when, the, the reason why it was never enacted was duly because you all were uncertain as to how you wanted to distribute that 3%.
Yep.
And so what we're going to say today is, let's take the distribution portion out of the equation, just go ahead and take the 3%, uh, give it to our team members, uh, let them enjoy that, and then we can move forward with that.
When we distribute this money, we're saying 3%. It's 3% of the gross payroll, correct?
Yes, sir.
Are we going to equally distribute that money? Am I going to get $10 and she's going to get $50, or is it going to be 3% divided by 52 employees?
It's 3%. 3% based upon each individual's rate of pay. So for example, just to keep numbers, numbers simple, if you make $100, 3% for you would be a $3 raise, but if someone's making 200, it would be a $6 raise.
Right, and that's where I have a problem, is because we all live here, the cost of living is the same for all of us, just because you make the $100,000 a year and I make $50,000 a year. I understand the principle, you're supposed to spend more money, therefore your cost of living is supposed to be higher. That's not necessarily the case.
Yeah, but that's not, that's not a case that we can fix.
No, we can fix that. The city can give, if you're giving a, a cost of living raise, you can give $50 to every person, no matter what their payroll is, that their money comes in merit imposition.
Well, ca, well, Mayor, you're, you're very correct. We could look at, at potentially just saying, just instead of doing a percentage portion, you could take the 3% of the budgeted line item, and if you wanted to divide that up equally amongst everybody and say, there you go, we, we could do that. Um, the difference is, what we've got to look at is not just that, but we've got to look at best practices in the industry.
Right.
And best practices dictates that it is based upon people's current salaries when you do a COLA. It's just what you're saying with a COLA is this, we're going to give you 3%, we don't care if you were the best employee or the worst employee, we're going to give you 3% and we're going to increase what you're currently making by that amount because we recognize cost of living. Then we have to consider compounding faction, uh, issues as well.
Right.
The CPI in this area was around 3%, I learned, so that would be matching the CPI. But what if the CPI is 2% and we give a 3%? We're now raising their, their cost of living wages by one percentage point more than what is going out of their pockets based upon the CPI.
Right.
Okay, so while I understand where you're coming from, I can certainly respect that, and I agree that that is one way to take care of it, I think if we stay with best practices, we're going to be better positioned as a municipality, a governing body, to, to keep in line with everything and move forward together and keep morale moving in the direction we need it to move.
I can understand that. Um, at the end of the day, it's up to you guys, what you want to do with it. By no means do I know more than he does on this, and if that's what he recommends, then I would go with it.
From the little research that I did look up, it seemed like the cost of living increase was, from what I could find, at the starting of our budget, would have been 2.9 or 3%. So that would make sense.
That's what I found also.
I, I firmly believe if we do this, we need to, it needs to be a cost of living adjustment and not merit based. So if we're going to do it, it needs to, in my opinion, I would make a motion that it would be a 3% for the cost of living adjustment for agenda item number 11, and then move past 12 and work in that fiscal year 2020.
Second.
I'll second that, because that's what I want. I don't want to, I didn't want to tie it up, try to make it something else, and I wanted the flat 3% done and over with, they, it's retroactive, uh, from October 1, and then now we have six months to create a program that will allow us to have merit and cost of living, and it will be a budgeted line item, and it allows the department heads and our leaders that we're putting in place to utilize that in the way that it's supposed to be utilized.
And what that means, I mean, because now that we've heard how you feel about it, it makes me feel more comfortable. It'll allow you six months or so to establish, um, uh, an evaluation process on the merit raise. I did ask the Adolpho if we can retroactively do it. He said because it's budgeted, we can, so I feel comfortable doing that. So that, that's my motion, that we do a 3% cost of living increase that's retroactive to October 1, 2019, to present time, and then ride it out through the rest of the year.
And I'll second that.
Uh, does that have to be done by resolution? If it doesn't, include that, let's capture that in the motion.
Yeah, it should be. That way it's, uh, it's, it's more easily, I think, filed, where you could cite where it's been budgeted and where the money's coming from. And, uh, yes, you could amend the, amend the item to, uh, by resolution.
I'll just add in the motion and have city staff draft it and approve the resolution.
And I'll second that.
Jack, you have any reservations on any of this?
No, sir, I'm clear.
Okay.
I don't, I don't have any reservations, and I, I like the idea. Um, the only, and I'm going to go back to, because I went back and watched all our videos, and it started out as a cost of living, uh, but then it quickly changed because you said that cost of living doesn't really work for the city of Kennedy, so my question is, where, where did it?
Well, because it's exactly what I said, if, if you get $50 and I get 20, how does that really help me? I'm buying the same fuel you're buying.
No, I, no, what I'm saying, that, that's what it started out as, but then you didn't want the cost of living, then it changed to?
3% of my wages, you, the gap between you and I is already created. You're going to get 100 and I'm going to get $20. How does that help when I buy the same fuel you buy? I buy the same groceries, the same utility.
I understand that part of it, but what I'm saying is, then it switched over to a merit increase based on evaluation. So that, I mean, that's what it started out as?
That's, that's, you're right, it started out as that, and, and we said, we're going to get, we're going to get this done in a couple of months, so it can be done and, and finished.
I'm just asking what changed, I understand, because you were?
We just, the 3% was set aside for both?
No, it was not for both.
No, it was just for merit.
At the very, very beginning.
I went back and watched all the videos, and it was not for both. It was only for the merit increase. But I, I don't have a problem doing it, you know, with your suggestion. I'm just saying where did it change, because it was a merit increase based on evaluation. But I realize?
We all agreed to give it, we did all agree to give the, give city manager the opportunity to do the evaluations, and then go ahead and once everything happened, retro everything that's owed to these employees.
You're going to be working on it.
Most definitely.
Well, I have good faith in you that you'll get a good system established, even though I won't be here, a good system established for these employees.
I appreciate that, and we will, yes, sir.
Is there any other discussion?
Would this, would this retro be all a lump sum, or would it be divided out in the next couple of months?
Well, the only fair thing to do is to?
All the employees are on the same page, and they understand?
Right, the only fair thing to do is to give them a lump sum on, on a paycheck, and it'll be subject to applicable taxes, deductions, and all that, just like anything else, just like their regular paycheck would be, so. Um, and there should be a, there should be an item, an N code, to where you can do a reimbursement or something like that, to where it's not penalizing them the, um, the tax rate of a gift or a bonus or anything like that, because those tax rates are much higher than their normal tax rates. So we can, we'll work together to make sure that happens so that they get what's actually owed.
Okay, one, one last discussion piece.
Yes, sir.
And I, it kind of just came to my mind, how, how are you going to do this, say, if employee A worked 38 hours one week, are you going to give them, give employee A the full 40 hours of that 3%? Or are we going to go back to payroll and say, okay, well, employee A worked 38 hours, then worked 40 hours for the next two weeks, for the 40 hours next two weeks, but then worked 38 hour, 32 hours, you see what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
Or just because, and there might be some more math to it, because everybody takes time off, or they might work a little, I'm sure, a little under.
It would be hours of work, wouldn't it?
Yeah, it should be hours of work.
One, one simple way to do it is just to do the, and I had Ms. Hines run how many payrolls you all have had, since this happened, you all have had 12 payrolls. So N code is a fabulous system, guys.
That information.
When, uh, yeah, at, at the touch of a fingertip, she can pull up how many hours a person has worked and accumulated since October 1, and we can just do it like that and then just take 3% of their salary times that, and, you know, we're, we're off and, we're off and running.
And the next question I have is, what about the employees that were hired this year of 2020? Are they going to be subject to getting this as well, or is it just the ones that were on board prior to approving this into the budget?
Well, that's an excellent question, Councilman Brianna. However, what I would say is, to be fair, firm, and consistent, okay? We would only want to include employees who actually have received paychecks or worked hours during the time period in question of the 12 pay periods. So if someone was hired, say, you know, prior to that, or after that, I should say, okay, they would not be eligible for that, because this is based on the 3% of the termed-in payroll at the time, okay? So just like, for example, a great example would be, okay, you hire a new city manager and you bring them in now, and you're giving everybody a 3% pay increase, do you give the city manager a 3% pay increase? The answer is no, you don't. You know, even though you make it retroactive, that's just not the way it works, okay? So it's just, we just have had a snafu, because it's what we've had, and so what we're doing is, we're going back and we're saying, we're going to correct this snafu, we're going to make it right with everybody. So that's where a lot of this is going to come into play, we're going to have to look at the 12, the 12 pay periods, who all was working, who all was employed at that time, and we're going to have to go backwards and take care of those individuals, which we will do.
Is there any other discussion?
The evaluations, you're going to make that a priority?
Oh, yes, ma'am, most definitely. And I've already begun talking to some of the department heads, and we're going to start putting our heads together as to what we would like to see you do, because quite frankly, Councilman Sands, you know, the, the department heads are going to be the ones that's going to initial reviews, and then the city manager's going to be there to go over it with them to approve them, and that's the way it should work. Um, so, and then, of course, the city manager does the department head reviews.
Can you give what those new employees that won't be getting this and explain to them the reason why they won't be getting it, so that way they're not upset when they're, everyone else is getting it and talking about it?
Yes, sir. I have no issue with talking to individuals and explaining why things are the way they are, uh, and, you know, how it does actually benefit them in the long run.
Is there any other discussion?
This will take effect, effective?
As soon as you all make a motion. Tomorrow.
If there's no other discussion, please call the roll.
Councilor Brianna?
Yes.
Councilor Owen?
Yes.
Councilor Science?
Yes.
Councilor Connor?
Yes.
Councilor Meyer?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 12, consideration of possible action in regard to merit or performance-related pay rate increase for city of Kennedy employees.
May I correct you, did we take no action on item 12?
Second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, please call the roll.
Councilor Brianna?
Yes.
Councilor Owen?
Yes.
Councilor Science?
Yes.
Councilor Connor?
Yes.
Councilor Meyer?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. Item number 13, closed session, city council will make a closed session in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code under section 551.074 Personnel Matters, section 551.071, consultations with attorney pending on completed litigation in matters in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state board of Texas clearly requires discussion in closed session. Item number eight, consideration of possible action in regard to a city manager agreement with William Lynn. Item B, discussion with city attorney regarding complaint concerning water and wastewater service extensions, service taps, city ordinances pertaining to application and permit of such, and TCEQ environmental requirements. Any movement?
I'll make a motion, we go into closed session.
One second.
Any discussion? If there's no discussion, please call the roll.
Council Brianis?
Yes.
Council Owen?
Yes.
Council Science?
Yes.
Council Connaught?
Yes.
Council Meyer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. At this time, we're going into closed session. Twenty-six, um, motion to reconvene?
I'll make a motion, re- reconvene back into open session.
I'll second.
Item number fourteen, open session. The City Council will reconvene in open session at which time action on, actions on the matter discussed in closed session may be considered. Item number eight, consideration of possible action in regard to a city manager agreement with William Lynn. Any movement?
I'll make a motion that we approve the last amended, um, city manager agreement with Mr. Lynn and have the mayor execute.
I'll second that, okay.
Discussion. If there's no discussion, please call the roll.
Council Brianis?
Yes.
Council Owen?
Yes.
Council Science?
Yes.
Council Connaught?
Yes.
Council Meyer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you very much, my honor.
When do you plan to go to work again, just sort of a vote note?
I'd plan to be here right in early in the morning.
All right, thank you so much.
Sir.
Item number B, discussion with city attorney regarding complaint concerning water and wastewater service extensions, service taps, city ordinances pertaining to the application and permit of such, and TCEQ environmental requirements. Any movement?
I'll make a motion, um, that we have our city attorney and city administration, uh, be directed as was in, um, executive session.
And I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, please call the roll.
Council Brianis?
Yes.
Council Owen?
Yes.
Council Science?
Yes, sir.
Council Connaught?
Yes.
Council Meyer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item number fifteen, city manager report.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I'm just, uh, proud to report that Mr. Chris Cortez of our Wastewater Department is being recognized as an Employee of the Month. Uh, Chris is, uh, doing an outstanding job keeping the plant operating, especially during the time of reconstruction. And he does a, uh, just an outstanding job keeping us compliant with TCE regulations. And we just want to commend his work very highly.
Thank you. We'll let him know if we see him. Anything else to add?
That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Any means adjourned. Thank you, guys, for coming out tonight.